Welcome everyone to Township Council Meeting, Monday, May 19, 2025. This meeting is now called to order. Councilwoman Patel, please lead us in the bike salute.
To the public, for which it stands, one nation under our individual liberty and justice.
Madam Clerk, please read the statement of public notice.
Take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA 10:4-8 and NJSA 10:4-10 as follows. Notice of the meeting was prominently posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building located at 225 Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey on January 7th, 2025. A copy of the notice was sent to the North Jersey Herald and News and the Record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed in the Office of the Township Clerk on said date. A link and a telephone number to join the meeting virtually can be accessed on the township website at littlefallsnj.gov. Electronic provisions have been established for the public to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel.
Present.
Councilmember Murphy.
Present.
Councilmember Hablets.
Present.
Councilmember Vancheri.
Present.
Council President Scobha.
Present. Have a motion to approve minutes of April 28, 2025.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Murphy, seconded by Councilman Vancheri. Please call the roll to approve the minutes of April 28, 2025.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Hablets. Councilmember Vancheri.
Yes.
Council President Scobha.
Yes. Have a motion to approve the minutes of meeting, May 5th, 2025. Moved by Councilwoman Hablets, seconded by... I'm sorry, Councilwoman Patel? I'm sorry. Please call the roll to approve the minutes of May 5th, 2025.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Hablets.
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri.
Yes.
Council President Scobha.
Yes. Mayor Damiano, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, this evening, the first item up is my appointment to the Library Board of Alexis Sarriama for a five-year term that would expire May 31st, uh, 2030, and that requires the advice and consent of the council.
Whatever. Go ahead, Mayor.
You can take the motion, right? Second now to advising consent.
Okay. So we want to make a motion for her. Okay. So there's a motion on the table to approve the recommendation of the mayor.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Patel, seconded by Councilwoman Hablets, all those in... Uh, there's a roll call, please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy.
Yes.
Councilmember Hablets. Councilmember Vancheri.
Yes.
Council President Scobha.
Yes.
Great, thank you, Council Members, and we have several proclamations this evening before we invite up our two honored guests here. And we're going to start with the three proclamations that we have. The first of which is National Bike Month. And if you're able to somehow fight through the pollen in the air that is triggering everybody's allergies and able to get out there on your bike, uh, we certainly encourage you to do so. Uh, just make sure you take your Zizol or your Claritin or one of those before you get out there for too long because it is sure coming down heavy, hence the clearing of my throat frequently through the meeting. And National Bike Month proclamation reads, whereas throughout the month of May, the township of Little Falls will be celebrating biking and the freedom, the joy, and the well-being it instills within us, as well as the power that more people riding bikes has in making life better for everyone. And whereas, May 12th to May 18th, 2025 is Bike to Work Week, and May 16th, 2025 is Bike to Work Day. And whereas, biking has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, growing the economy, attracting tourism dollars, and local business spending, and reducing pollution, congestion, and parking costs on our streets and roads. And whereas, throughout the month of May, the residents of the township of Little Falls are encouraged to experience the joys of bicycling. And now therefore, I, Mayor James Belford Damiano, on behalf of the Little Falls Township Council, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as National Bike Month in the township of Little Falls. The next proclamation we have this evening is our National EMS Week proclamation. And I am proud to say that Little Falls has had averages, excuse me, of less than four-minute response times with our ambulances, uh, here in Little Falls since moving to our, our, our program that we currently have. Uh, and it has been a tremendous benefit to the residents of this municipality. And this proclamation reads, whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of the Little Falls Fire and Emergency Medical Service Teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas, the emergency medical service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medis- medical care providers. And whereas, members of the emergency medical service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. And now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor James Belford Damiano, on behalf of the Township of Little Falls Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th to May 24th, 2025 as Emergency Medical Service Week within the, uh, with the EMS theme. We care for everyone and encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank our EMTs and all of our first responders here in town that provide emergency medical care to all of our residents. Uh, I know we do have, uh, in fact, about 1,600 calls per year or maybe in excess of that. Uh, so while everyone likes to think, and I'm happy that everybody likes to think that Emergent- Little Falls is a small town where there's very few emergencies or calls for service, the fact of the matter is, uh, our Little Falls EMTs are out there working every single day to ensure that Little Falls residents, uh, remain healthy and safe and are able to get the care they need very quickly. So thank you to all of our EMTs in town who provide this service to all of our residents. The next proclamation that we have is National Law Enforcement Week. And it reads, whereas National Police Week is observed every May to honor the service and sacrifices of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. And whereas, there are more than 700,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the 34 sworn officers serving our town. And whereas, since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 24,000 new law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and lost their lives in the line of duty. Whereas, the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas, the new names of the fallen heroes are added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial every spring. And whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty was honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 37th candlelight vigil held on May 13th, 2025. And whereas, May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown and have staff. And now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor James Belford Damiano, on behalf of the Little Falls Township Council, do hereby proclaim May 11th to May 17th, 2025 as National Police Week in the township of Little Falls and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and all communities across the nation. And as I just thanked our EMTs for their countless hours and incredible support to our community, it certainly goes without saying that our Police Department is also a 24/7/365 operation. We have officers, uh, on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, meaning that they are here working to keep us safe on nights, on holidays, on weekends, and every single day while we're out enjoying, uh, and with this upcoming Memorial Day, of course, I want to honor all the veterans who have served and made the ultimate sacrifice. Uh, many of our veterans getting into law enforcement, uh, in their future careers. Uh, so thank you to all of the not only police officers, but families of the officers who, uh, allow their spouses to walk out the doors, or their children, or their, their friends every single day, uh, putting their lives on the line to make sure that we all stay safe. So thank you to our entire Police Department here in Little Falls, as well as all officers across this nation who keep us safe every single day. And now, onto a couple of very exciting individuals that we have here in town. And while I've certainly enjoyed being the mayor in Little Falls here for going on my ninth year, uh, there's been a number of occasions where I have been truly proud to be the mayor of this township. And this is one of those evenings where I'm extremely proud to be the mayor of this town, to have two individuals from Little Falls make the rank of valedictorian and salutatorian at Passaic Valley High School. And we're so thankful to have both of you here this evening. And I want to read a little bit about each of you. I'm going to ask each to join me up here individually and then together at the end as I read just a little bit about all the incredible accomplishments that you've made, not only academically, because that goes without saying if you're the valedictorian and salutatorian. But all of the things that each of you have done, in addition to putting your head down and getting through school with the highest grades that anyone can achieve. You've done so many things outside of school that really show the true character of what the two of you have done for this community. Uh, and, and I want to thank you for all of that. So the first person I'm going to ask to join me up here is Wilhelmina Youngberg, the salutatorian of PB. All right. So Wilhelmina is the salutatorian of Passaic Valley's class of 2025. She's serving as the president of her school's chapter of the National Math Honor Society, as well as the treasurer of the Art Honor Society. Her fall season consists of playing for the varsity girls soccer team, of which she was a captain this year. She's amassed over 800 saves as the goalkeeper of this team. Pretty impressive. During winter, she takes part in girl's show as the head of green posters, where she works to design, draw, and paint the themes of the main events. She's volunteered at school blood drives, helped paint the mural for the Little Falls Recreation Center, and participated in the charity Hey Jude concert to benefit St. Jude Children's Research Hospital. In addition to playing music, she also loves to paint, sew, and bake. Another thing that I can certainly get behind. Will be attending the College of New Jersey in the fall to further her academic career by maj- by majoring in nursing. She hopes to become a labor and delivery nurse in the future. I want to congratulate you on such an incredible accomplishment this year and really thank you for, for being such a part of this community every single day. Congratulations.
Of course.
And we want to present you with a proclamation that outlines, uh, essentially what we just, what we just said, and we want to thank you for everything that you've done. And I'm going to invite the council up here for a photo along with your... There it is here. Come on up. All right, and now I'm going to invite Maria Richards to join me up here, the valedictorian of Passaic Valley's high school class of 2025. In addition to being the valedictorian of the class of 2025, Maria's been a dedicated student and active leader. She serves as the president of the school's GSA, vice president of the art club, the school's largest club, and secretary of the debate club, another thing I enjoy doing. Beyond the classroom, Maria is a member of the varsity fencing team and is deeply involved in mentoring programs. She supports incoming students as a peer mentor and serves as a fast friend to students in the Special Education Department. Her commitment to service extends throughout the community. Maria regularly volunteers at food drives at the Total Public Library, helps students as a homework helper at the Alfred H. Bowman Public Library in Woodland Park, and supports local initiatives in Little Falls, including the St. Agnes Food Drive. During her summers, Maria continues to pursue academic challenges. Most recently, she competed in a four-week artificial intelligence program at Carnegie Mellon University. This fall, she'll attend Princeton University, where she plans to major in chemistry. Maria's nature nurtured a love of baking since childhood, again, very much after my own heart, and aspires to blend her passion for food with her academic interests by becoming a food scientist. And we wish her the best of luck in her future endeavors and can't wait to see what you can do in the future. Congratulations. All right, Council President, that's enough from me this evening, and I will turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, it should be duly noted that besides the mayor, there's also three alumni from Passaic Valley that sits on this dais. So again, congratulations. Yep.
I don't know if I was the best student, but... Yeah.
Move the council reports. Uh, Councilman Murphy would like to lead us off, please.
Thank you, Council President. First, I'd just like to congratulate, um, both of them tonight. What, what an accomplishment, and it's great to see them here and, uh, gladly honoring them. Uh, some exciting news for the Domestic Violence Awareness Committee. Um, this year, again, we've partnered with the Girl Scouts, um, for the Memorial Day Parade. So, um, when you see us on Saturday, uh, the committee will be marching alongside the Girl Scouts, which is just a really awesome, um, thing to partner with them on and to see them alongside our, our, our members is just a really nice thing. So keep an eye out for them. It's exciting, and other committees excited for it, and other girls are excited for it. So just a really nice thing. Also, on June 5th, we have our partnership with the Prosecutor's Office for the presentation at Passaic Valley High School. Um, and we have a meeting on June 3rd as well. So a lot of exciting things happening for the committee, um, and a lot to look forward to. Uh, other than that, just want to wish everybody a happy and safe Memorial Day.
Thank you, Councilman Murphy. Councilman Vancheri?
Thanks, Council President. I too echo congratulations to our two students that are here. It's always great to see when, uh, Superintendent Healy puts out the communication and the two students that are being honored are from Little Falls. That means the world to us, obviously, and thank them for coming here. And I'm sure their parents are proud, and we're looking forward to graduation next month. So we're going to hear their speeches. Um, as Councilman Murphy just said, you know, this weekend, obviously, we've got a lot going on in town. Friday night is the annual concert in the park. We're back for our sixth year. Uh, we have two bands lined up, and we have three food trucks. The Boy Scouts will be there also selling some hot dogs and water. The Girl Scouts will be there. If you need Girl Scout cookies, they still have plenty they want to get rid of. So you're going to have them there. Uh, the Clifton Health Department's going to be there. Our Police Department's going to have a table for community policing as well, and some others are going to be there. So if you get a chance on Friday night, stop by. We'll be there at 6 o'clock, and we'll probably be there until 9:00 PM or a little after that. Then the next day, uh, is our annual Memorial Day Parade, which starts at 10:00 AM. Uh, I've put flyers all over the place. Thanks to the Police Department today, they put out the digital sign right on here on Main Street as a reminder. We have a banner over at Wilmore Road Park. I'll probably do some videos this week to remind people, because I saw a post today, Wednesday Memorial Day Parade. It's always on the Saturday Memorial Day weekend. It hasn't changed, but I'll make sure that it's communicated. Uh, we have a good lineup that's set up with, uh, members from the military, you know, past and present are going to be marching. We have some military vehicles. We have the police fire. So many different organizations and groups have signed up as well. There's going to be some music too, uh, so I want to just let people know that. Um, and then on Thursday, we're going to meet, uh, with all the different departments here just to go over all the plans to make sure that we're squared away for Friday and for Saturday. And I do want to remind people too, on Saturday, make sure, you know, after the parade, you stick around. The Little Falls, uh, the American Legion Post 108 holds their annual services to honor the men and women who gave the ultimate sacrifice. And then, of course, there's a couple barbecues that afternoon, one by the American Legion, another one by the, um, Masons. So if you're, you're around town this weekend, hopefully you can support some of the activities that are going on. Uh, that's it for me, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman Vancheri. Councilwoman Hablets?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I too would like to echo another congratulations, uh, to the two girls. That is a great feat and so very proud of them. Um, also, congratulations to Alexis Sarriama on her appointment to the Library Board. Uh, she is a great addition, uh, to the trustee board. Some library updates. Um, there is a Read with Daisy. It's back this Wednesday, um, at 6:00 PM. Uh, you can read with the Certified Therapy Dog, so please register at the library's website. Uh, also, please follow the library's social media pages or their website. And they have a brand-new social media, uh, series of historic New Jersey. I actually tapped into, was just talking about it and how wonderful the library is. It is a great addition. Uh, they take journeys, uh, through the historical New Jersey landmarks, uh, and then post it as a series. So might want to catch that either on their webpage or their social media. Uh, the farmer's market started yesterday. It was a great start. We had over 1,000 people in attendance. It was really great. Uh, it was great seeing the community come together and enjoy all of the great vendors, uh, the market has to offer. This Sunday, we will be bouncing into summer with a great giant big, uh, bounce house from 10 to 1, so start your summer off right. Start at the concert on Friday, the parade on Saturday, and then Sunday, stop at the market for the bounce house. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hablets. Uh, Councilwoman Patel?
Uh, thank you, Council President. I too want to echo, uh, my council and congratulate the graduates. Um, as one of those PB alum, it's great to see Little Falls residents continue to shine. Uh, I also want to thank our health director, John Beagle, and his entire team at the Clifton Health Department for, uh, being there this past Friday to help us remember the lives that were lost during the pandemic, um, at our second annual COVID-19 memorial. On Thursday, May 22nd, at 6:00 PM, at the Little Falls Civic Center, they are hosting a mocktail paint and sip. And so residents are able to paint their own masterpieces, sip our mocktails, while also being informed on sun safety. Um, on May 29th, at 7:00 PM, at the Clifton Senior Center, they're having a presentation called Spring into Wellness. It's essentially a presentation on holistic approaches to wellness, um, encouraging participants to develop skills that support their well-being and overcome life challenges. So I encourage any of those that want to attend that, um, either contact me or you can contact the Clifton Health Department directly. Um, I do also want to thank the Clifton Health Department for applying for and being awarded a $5,000 grant from Chilton, um, that's going to be used to raise awareness on mental health and also to help, uh, teach those in Little Falls on different mental health techniques to help, um, anyone that is in need. So thank you to them for that. And then finally, we had our last Public Health Committee meeting on March 14th. We are in the process of creating a new survey. Um, if everyone remembers, we did one when I first got on board. Um, so we really just want to get a better understanding of what the residents are, are looking for um, when it comes to public health. And that's all I have, Council President.
Thank you. Chief Pearl, do you have anything for us this evening?
Uh, just briefly, Council President. I just wanted to give an update on the April You Text, You Drive, You Pay Grant. So we did exhaust, uh, 92 hours of enforcement. That resulted in an additional 180 motor vehicle stops. Uh, we issued 77 summonses. Uh, these aren't just department statistics. Those are in the department report. This is, uh, in addition to, um, and solely based on the grant. 18 cellphone violations, 46 others, two-seat belts, six suspended drivers, four careless drivers, and one reckless driver. Again, this is, uh, due to the good work of our, uh, grant writer and, uh, you know, uh, the support that I received from the mayor and council and the pursuit of those grants that were able to bring these enforcement grants to the community. So I just wanted to give a report on that. I do have, uh, some good news. Um, the, uh, Mothers Against Drunk Driving just announced the annual award, awards for 2025, and I'm happy to report that the Top Gun, the number-one, um, DWI enforcement for all of Passaic County was Patrolman Matt Yunuzi from Little Falls Police Department. So this will be the third year in a row that Matt is awarded. So there'll be a breakfast that, uh, either myself or somebody from the command staff will attend. And then, uh, with your permission, I'd like to bring him back before the council in the future, and we can present, you know, his ribbon, his award in front of a lot of the community.
Thank you, Chief. It'd be a great honor, uh, when that schedule permits. Get in touch with me, and we'll make that arrangements. Uh, Chief, can you just circle back? You said 181 individuals were pulled over for texting. Is that what I heard you say?
So there, um, there was an additional 180 as part of the enforcement grant. So we had an officer on, on the grant, and they conducted 180 motor vehicle stops. The, the reason or the reasonable articulable suspicion for the initial stop could have been of various things, but it was targeting distracted dri- or you text, you pay. So all distracting driving. And distracted driving doesn't necessarily equate to you being on the phone. You could be playing with the radio. You could have a dog on your lap. It's just anything that's the driver's doing to take your attention off the roadway, and then the officer specifically go out and target those things.
Thank you, Chief. Councilor Wenzel, do you have anything for us this evening?
No, Council President.
Thank you. Have a motion to open the meeting to the public for agenda items only. Moved by Councilwoman Hablets, seconded by Councilman Vancheri. All those in favor? All those opposed? Madam Clerk?
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. It is preferred if you give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However appropriate, you may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the Council President. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide comment shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. The meeting moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment, and the Council President will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star 6 to mute and unmute themselves and star 9 to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you. The floor is now open. Seeing no one come before us, have a motion to close the public. So moved by Councilman, uh, Murphy, seconded by Councilman Vancheri. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Patel, uh, Patel, seconded by Councilman, uh, Vancheri. This is the call, uh, this is a roll call for the consent agenda. Madam Clerks, please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Hablets? Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobha?
Yes. Madam Clerk, at this time, please read ordinance 1517.
Second reading and public hearing of ordinance number 1517, an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance to Establish a New Chapter in the Code of the Township of Little Falls, Chapter 180 Entitled, Restricted Areas in Municipal Buildings."
Thank you. The public hearing on 1517 is now open. Does anyone wish to speak? Seeing no one, I, I'm closing. The public hearing on 1517 is now closed. Have a motion to adopt 1517.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Hablets, seconded by Councilman Vancheri. Madam Clerk, call the roll for 1517.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Hablets? Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobha?
Yes, Madam Clerk. Ordinance 1518, please.
Second reading and public hearing of ordinance number 1518, an ordinance entitled, "Calendar Year 2025, Ordinance to Exceed the Municipal Budget Appropriation Limits and to Establish a Cap Bank."
The public hearing on 1518 is now open. Does anyone wish to speak? Seeing no one, the public hearing ordinance is now closed for 1518. Have a motion to adopt 1518.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Patel, seconded by Councilwoman Hablets. Please call the roll for 1518.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Hablets? Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobha?
Yes, Madam Clerk. 1519, please.
Introduction of ordinance number 1519, an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls and County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, Two Men, Chapter 7, on Street Regulations, Handicap Parking of the Code of the Township of Little Falls, with a Second Reading and Public Hearing scheduled for June 4th, 2025."
Have a motion to introduce 1519. Moved, moved by Councilman Vancheri, seconded by Councilwoman Patel. There's a roll call. Madam Clerk, call the roll for to introduce 1519.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Hablets? Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobha?
Yes, at this time, Madam Clerk, 1520, please.
Introduction of ordinance number 1520, an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Little Falls and County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, Two Men, Chapter 7, on Street Regulations of the Code of the Township of Little Falls, with a Second Reading and Public Hearing scheduled for June 4th, 2025."
Have a motion to introduce 1520. Moved by Councilman Vancheri, seconded by Councilman Murphy. Please call the roll to introduce 1520.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Hablets?
Councilmember Hablets? Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scobha?
Yes. Have a motion, uh, to, uh, to open the meeting to the public for general matters. Moved by Councilwoman Hablets, second by Councilwoman Vancheri, all those in favor? All those opposed, motion carries, Madam Clerk?
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so through the Council President. It is preferred if you give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes, however appropriate, you may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the Council President. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide comment shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. Meeting moderator will cue the members of the public that wish to provide comment, and the Council President will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you. The floor is now open.
Council President?
May have?
Public comment, there is a resident here this evening, uh, whose name I won't say unless she gives me the thumbs up right now, who was a very strong advocate in having the railings replaced at our Little Falls post office. This has been a multi-year campaign and a multi-letter per year campaign that she has taken upon herself to, through our Congresswoman's office, Mikey Sherrill, to ensure that the railings that were not only unsightly, but were frankly dangerous at our Little Falls post office, rusted beyond belief, sharp edges. Uh, she took it upon herself to wage a multi-year campaign to ensure that these railings were replaced. And she was recently successful in having the railings replaced at the post office. They are not only much safer, but they are aesthetically, uh, much more, uh, pleasing to the eye. So I want to thank her for doing that, uh, with numerous letters by herself. And now, if they will only heed your second request of the landscaping and aesthetics of the building in general, um, we'd be in really great shape, but I want to thank you for what you've done to have the railings replaced at the post office.
You can, uh, you can come up, please. For the, for the record, state your name.
Maybe Inwood. But the mayor, when I first told him two years ago, he immediately called the post office and talked to the postmaster, but that went nowhere. And then you suggested get in touch with our Congresswoman, and that's what I did. So every six months I would write, and every six months I would get back a letter that would say the same thing. Oh, yes, it's going to be done, we're working on it, it's been approved, and it finally was. So I was so happy, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Have a motion to close the public?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Hablets, second by Councilman Murphy, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Murphy?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Patel, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries, this meeting is now closed.